The meeting to order for the regular meeting. Clerk of the Board, please call the roll.
Yes, Chairman. Commissioner Baker.
Present.
Commissioner Bodak.
Here.
Commissioner Garrickson.
President.
Commissioner Kowalski.
Here.
Commissioner Leon.
Here.
Commissioner Mirabella.
Present.
Commissioner Williams.
Here.
Vice Chairwoman Palmieri-Mudet.
Here.
And Chairman Granados.
Here.
Chairman, let the record reflect nine Commissioners present for this evening's regular meeting.
Thank you. Clerk of the Board, please lead us in the prayer and salute to the flag.
Humbly we ask God to give her peace and love her of charity, to give the entire family of nations true agreement with his will, and to grant the light of his Spirit on all who work for justice and peace.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Clerk of the Board, please read the statement of compliance with the Open Public Meetings Act.
The Chair wishes to announce that pursuant to the requirements of the New Jersey statute sanitized Title 10, Chapter 4, Section 10 of the Open Public Meetings Act, adequate notice of this meeting of the Board of County Commissioners of the County of Union has been given by mailing the annual meeting schedule for the year 2023 along with periodic changes necessitated by circumstance to the newspapers circulating within the County of Union who are designated to receive such notice, and by posting the annual meeting schedule for the year 2023 in the Administration Building, and further by filing the annual meeting schedule for the year 2023 with the Office of the County Clerk.
Thank you. May I have a motion to approve the communication?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Motion is made by Commissioner Mirabella, seconded by Commissioner Williams. Clerk of the Board, please call the roll.
Commissioner Baker.
Aye.
Commissioner Bodak.
Yes.
Commissioner Garrickson.
Yes.
Commissioner Kowalski.
Yes.
Commissioner Leon.
Aye.
Commissioner Mirabella.
Aye.
Commissioner Williams.
Aye.
Vice Chairwoman Palmieri-Mudet.
Aye.
And Chairman Granados.
Aye.
Chairman, let the record reflect.
Thank you. May I have a motion to approve the minutes of the Thursday, March 16th Agenda and Regular Meeting, March 30th Agenda and Regular Meeting?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Motion was made by Commissioner Mirabella, seconded by Commissioner Kowalski. Clerk of the Board, please call the roll.
Commissioner Baker.
Mr. Chairman and Clerk, I have to abstain from Thursday, March 30th Agenda Setting Session and the March 30th Regular Meeting.
Commissioner Bodak.
Yes.
Commissioner Garrickson.
Yes, to 1, 3, and 4 abstain on.
I'm sorry, abstain on.
2.
Commissioner Kowalski.
Yes.
Commissioner Leon.
Aye.
Commissioner Mirabella.
Aye.
Commissioner Williams.
Aye.
Vice Chairwoman Palmieri-Mudet.
Aye.
Chairman Granados.
Aye.
Chairman, you have nine votes in the affirmative for the March 16th Agenda Setting Session. You have eight votes in the affirmative with one abstention for the minutes of the March 16th Regular Meeting, and you have eight votes in the affirmative with one abstention for the minutes of the March 30th Agenda and Regular Meetings.
Thank you very much. The meeting is now open to the public for the purpose on commentary on resolutions being offered for adoption and/or any governmental issue that a member of the public feels may be of concern. Kindly state your name and town and residence for the record, and if speaking on a resolution on the agenda, please note the resolution to which you're referring and adhere to the five-minute time limit.
Agenda Thursday. Okay. Good afternoon. Salam Ismail. Here, I'm the Director of National United Council Incorporated, based in Elizabeth, New Jersey. Just here briefly, just to clear the air on something. Is this on?
Yes.
Yes, Clerk?
Yes, it is.
Okay. I just want to clear the air on something that some of my colleagues is a little confused. Okay, we came here for the 1741 Project, which involved the three slaves that was executed on February 25th, 1741. We asked then that the county would consider a monument of some sort at the site of what we believe, and some of our research and finding, at the county courthouse. We was asked to meet with representatives of the Parks and Recreation and also representative of the Heritage, I believe, Heritage Association or what have you, and we met with them for about an hour and a half. And at that point, there was no resolution. Their understanding to us that they was there to listen and to hear our proposal. They wasn't there to make any decisions, negotiate any kind of understanding or what have you. I'm not going to call it a waste of time or even an attack on my intelligence, but I will say this. We asked again that you consider that and to come up with a meeting because they wasn't there to make decisions, representative of this body, so we can come up with a decision on that. In the meantime, we are launching a campaign to support the three slaves, in recognition of the three slaves that have been wrongfully executed by the law enforcement of that time. Secondly, on June, on Saturday, June 17th, we will hold our own recognition at the side of the county courthouse with a prayer vigil and some other exercise responses on June 17th, which is the weekend of the Juneteenth celebration, which would be so much of an embarrassment if we, if our county did not do anything in tribute to that. Now, one of the newspapers had mentioned as if there was some sort of resolution. I hear to say to our residents that are watching and here that that was not the case. As of this time, is for the most part, our requests have gone ignored. And I've been, been very patient in trying to deal with this body without a whole lot of unnecessary controversy or protest. Again, I reach out to that, to the body and to you, Mr. Chairman, because I had a number of conversations with you about this, and this should be not nothing bad. You know, a lot of my people relating this lack of response to not only insensitive, but also racist by your history of other things dealing with the black community specifically. And I hope that's not the case, because if it is, that's a problem that we're not set heavily by. We're in our city right now dealing with a policing issue, an issue where involving police officers went into our community and done it unjust to many of our young people that been shown on social media and Facebook alone almost a half a million times because our community is very, very tired of being disrespected, and I'm closing out. I hope that is not the case with this body. And I'm going to give you a week or two to think about it. Those three slaves under the jurisdiction and responsibility of the law enforcement at that time, at that time sheriff officers ran the policing. They were done unjustly, those three African-American, perhaps male, very young. I hope you do not ignore this and thinking Salam Ismail is going to be silent, not going to. So I come here, just me and my representatives, to share that last thing to you. Hopefully, Chairman, you can come back to us and have a realistic dialogue on this so we can come to some solution.
Thank you, Mr. Ismail.
Thank you very much.
Sorry, I didn't catch your town and residence. For the record, we didn't catch that part. Your town and residence, please. Town and residence. It's your name, town and residence.
I said Elizabeth, New Jersey.
Okay, sounds good, sir. Anyone else from the public?
Robert Lamorte, Union. Good evening, Chair and members of the Commissioner Board. On behalf of the Union Township Historical Society, I extend to you our sincere appreciation for your decision concerning the existing seal of the County of Union depicting Hannah Caldwell and her son Elias Budino Caldwell at the parsonage during the Battle of Connecticut Farms, a turning point in the American Revolution, which our country will celebrate in three years. The UTHS looks forward to working with the Union County Office of Cultural and Heritage Affairs at its meeting next week to continue developing plans with the other county historical organizations for that celebration in 2026, which is known as the Semi-Quincentennial. And I wish the members of the 1741 Project good luck with their goal. Thank you.
Thank you.
First, I just wanted to commend the Commissioners on taking applause.
Excuse me, your town and name, President Stark, please.
Kelly Comar, Roselle.
Thank you.
I just want to commend you all on taking moments, pause, and reevaluate your decision on changing the seal. I think the fact that you are taking a moment, even though you may personally not agree with the residents, speaks volumes about you personally, about your stations, and about your integrity. You now have the opportunity to show that you are not a board that will forcefully push something through, but that you are willing to connect, listen, and be one with the residents of the county and hear their opinions. You have the ability to assure the preservation of an important part of our local history and of Hannah's legacy, and that will speak volumes to the residents, and it will not be something that's soon forgotten. I also wanted to mention the 1741 Project. I don't know if this will help. I know at one of the meetings you mentioned that you had historians working on it, and in the book, The History of Elizabeth, including history of Union County, it talks about the three men who were burned at the stake. It gives the dates February 25th for the first man and June 4th for the other two men, and it references the account book of justices and freeholders in Essex County. As you know, Elizabeth Town at that time was part of Essex County. It also mentions the men who were writing to the county to get paid for carding the wood for the executions. So they would probably also include in there where they were taking the lumber too. So that, if that helps them at all. I have a copy of it here.
We have it, yeah.
So, do you want to have?
We have, we already have a copy of that.
Do you have it? Okay. All right, just wanted to make sure.
You can provide a copy if you want to the Clerk of the Board.
Okay. And I hope that helps the historians and that these three souls are finally able to be memorialized as they deserve. That's all.
Thank you, dear.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the Commissioner Board and Dr. Garrickson. Bruce Patterson, 325, Willavon, Garwood. This is business. REZO 378 is extending a two-year contract to Coronas Health for $250,000 for EMS billing and collection services. The question is, how successful has Coronas been at collecting to offset the quarter million dollars we are paying him instead of doing this work in-house? Is their collection spreadsheet the public can access to justify this high expense? REZO 380 is $150,000 contract to USA Architects to provide architectural services for the demolition of the Union County Courthouse parking deck. In 2020, you gave Neta Architects $1.1 million. That included a work item called Architect Services for demolition of the courthouse parking deck, the exact same wording. Is this now duplicate billing that you should not be doing, and this duplication of costs needs to be explained? REZO 389 is very confusing. It involves $4 million county college bonds, yet all this resolution has is a word salad like prescribing, preparing, distribution, disclosure, printing, and looks like it is just paying for paperwork pushing and does not even include the bond itself. This needs further clarification for the public to understand as to who you plan to give this $4 million, what project is involved, and if real bonds are involved, how much are they? REZO 394 is $23,000. More money is being given to Royal Printing Company due to the new state law. His contract now totaling over 250, $2.5 million. Have you asked the state why are all these revised election laws just being dribbled out to the counties? Because every change order generates additional big profits to the contractor. I have been tracking our county election costs over the last three years. They now total around $8 million and possibly $500,000 is unwarranted profits for the contractors through the many change orders. And it's not just this county, it's also the other counties that incur the costs. REZO 395 is going to Nielsen Ford to purchase a 57,000 hybrid SUV, and I appreciate one of the Commissioners asking this question also. The question is, is this going through the state purchasing contract, and why isn't this an item included in your normal $55 million capital bonding, which is coming out in a couple of months? REZO 400 is increasing by $600,000 or 36% a contract to Fovionics for onsite scanning and document management. His contract now totaling $1.7 million. Question to comment, outside of the fact that this contract is two years out of date or of getting around bidding laws illegally, since it really should have gone out to bid if it was over 20%, have they been made aware that the onsite work may be moved further away from Elizabeth? REZO 401 reads a consent decree and other documents in the proposed voluntary settlement concerning election procedures. This needs explanation for the public regarding this lawsuit. I would assume Attorney Bergen will explain it. General comments, I understand the state has been waiting to occupy some floors of the county administration building, there at least. The floors that need to be vacated may be the Social Services Department, which you plan to move away from the city areas they actually serve. And this is strange, because this department should be where the need is most and not create further stress on those lower-income families that may have to travel farther to visit the department. And it's the same situation when you move the county jail over to Essex County. Regarding the county seal debate, to use the Haley's Comment term of one of the Commissioners, occasionally the public's interest wins out over the county's self-interest. So thank you very much for rejecting and reconsidering your position on the two ill-conceived designs in the survey. However, twice the public has asked in the spirit of transparency, who or what firm came up with those two questionable designs? We see no reason why the Commissioner Chair should avoid answering that easily, and we respectfully request you to provide that information. And the 1741 Project, you know, I've been coming to this meeting, and yes, Salam Ismail has been coming for five years as a guest, and I'll tell you, I see no reason. This is a historical aspect of the county, and something really should be done. I mean, it's even in the Union County Historical Book, as Ms. Comar had said. I don't know, for five years now, and you've been balking at it, I think you really should be doing something. Okay. I ask that you do. Thank you.
For number 378, 380, County Manager.
Sure, I'll start with one of Mr. Patterson's last comments. I'm not sure what you're talking about, social services in the city and the services not being in Elizabeth, that's, that there's no services that are in Elizabeth that won't be in Elizabeth. I'm not sure where you got that false information, but it's inaccurate. Everything that is offered in Elizabeth today will be there tomorrow in this time next year. For the parking deck, we talked about this at a meeting a few ago, that the bids came in millions over what we budgeted for, so we changed the scope and the outlook of the project. For billing and public safety, the billing is in fact up versus the previous vendor, and all the information about billables you could offer away. And those are the three answers, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much. County Manager. 3D9, Director Taylor.
So through you, Chairman, the plain language of the resolution establishes that we are authorizing electronic bidding, so we have not established who the bids or these bonds will be going to. The language also specifies that the bonds are in the amount of $4.2 million, and it is Chapter 12 bonds, which essentially means that we are sharing the cost with the state, which is 50/50, which amounts to $2.1 million. These bonds were authorized via Res Ordinance 839-2022 last year, October 6, 2022, and it is for the gymnasium expansion project at Union College.
Thank you very much, Director. 394, Clerk Verjapi.
Through you, Mr. Chairman, the $23,000 and change we are asking for, for Royal Printing, is a result of a federal consent order, not a state law. Right now, Union County does about half of its ballots in Spanish, which is determined by the state of New Jersey based on the last name, the surname of the person. They have a formula for that. But as of November, the federal government has mandated that all of our ballots be printed bilingualy, as well as all of our election materials. So right now, instead of 11 towns, we will be doing 21 towns in English and Spanish, and that is the additional cost, because by doing so, we're going to have a bigger sample ballot, number one, greater postage costs also.
Thank you very much.
Well.
400, Director Anderson.
These dollars were also American Rescue Plan funding, so it's a very unique way of how it's not impacting the county regular budget. It is American Rescue Plan dollars that followed all the guidelines and protocols that we had to follow to do the bidding and will go forward, and it is a state contracted vendor as well.
Thank you very much, Director.
Thank you.
County Counsel, 401.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is actually related to the comments made by the county clerk. There is currently no lawsuit. This is just the result of discussions between the U.S. Department of Justice, the county, the county clerk's office, the Board of Election, in order to ensure the continued access to bilingual paperwork and other documents and voting. The county and the other bodies have agreed to take certain steps. The, there is no wrongdoing that the county has been accused of, but this is just to ensure going forward, everybody has the ability to vote in their natural language, and that's really it.
Thank you very much. For number 395, Assistant Prosecutor.
Yes, Commissioner, all of our vehicles are bought through state-authorized vendors. This one in particular is being purchased through Nielsen Ford of Morris Town. In addition, our vehicles are purchased with forfeiture funds, therefore there is no cost to the county, and it falls outside our budget. Thank you.
Thank you. I believe that covers all the questions. And in reference to Mr. Salam Ismail, like your previous meeting with the Culture and Heritage Affairs Office, including Reverend, Dr. Lundey, pastor of the Salem Hope First Presbyterian Church, formerly the First Presbyterian Church, we're developing a comprehensive plan to appropriately acknowledge, which we've stated, we do mention that we do know it did occur, to acknowledge this tragic event. Our plans including partnering with the Salem Hope First Presbyterian Church to produce interpretive signage regarding the 1741 incident to be placed in an area within the site. In addition, we will be working with the 313 Plus Organization on their interpretive museum, which will include information on 313 Plus and a section dedicated to the events of 1741, as well as acknowledging the three souls at Ancestral Remembrance Day in late October at the Salem Hope First Presbyterian Church.
Holy, holy disrespect. Because we have nothing to do with this.
Mr. Ismail? We let you, we let you speak. We let you speak responding back to your comments.
No, there's going to be a dedicated section to some.
All right, thank you very much, Mr. Ismail. Appreciate your comments. So, Mr. Ismail, thank you very much for your comments. We appreciate it.
Officer. You don't want to do that. You want to do something.
You're not going to.
No. When you make force statements.
Mr. Ismail, we let you speak. Thank you very much. All right, thank you very much. Is there anyone else from the public wishing to comment?
Seeing no one else, I'll formally close this portion of the meeting and ask for a motion to adopt resolutions 2023-375 to 2023-405.
So moved.
Motion was made by Commissioner Williams, seconded by Vice Chairman Kimberly-Palmieri-Mudet. Clerk of the Board, please call the roll.
Commissioner Baker.
Aye.
Commissioner Bodak.
Yes.
Commissioner Garrickson.
Yes.
Commissioner Kowalski.
Yes.
Commissioner Leon.
Aye.
Commissioner Mirabella.
Aye.
Commissioner Williams.
Aye.
Commissioner Vice Chairwoman Palmieri-Mudet.
Aye.
And Commissioner Chairman Granados.
Aye.
Let the record reflect nine votes in the affirmative on all resolutions.
Thank you very much. We'll move to Commissioner Reports and Comments. To my left, Commissioner Betty Jane Kowalski.
Thank you, Chairman. I know our students have gone, but I want to thank the student poets who wrote about trees, as well as their families who came to support them. They've shown that they're very well-educated on the environment, and their teachers are doing a great job, and this is a good sign for our future. And speaking of the environment, we have our Wild Earth Fest this Sunday, April 30th, at Trailside Nature and Science Center in Watchung Reservation. It's one of the most popular events of the year, and it will feature a sea creature touch tank, a petting zoo, and a live demonstration of falcons. And we'll also have on hand the New Jersey Electrical Vehicle Association and members who will discuss their electric vehicle experiences as part of our own environmental education. And we'll welcome Toad Shade Wildflower Farm, Friends of the Great Swamp, the Native Plant Society of New Jersey, Union County Master Gardeners, Forage Master Tree Stewards, and the New Jersey Mycological Society. That's the society that studies fungi, which includes mushrooms. So for more information about Wild Earth Fest and other events, please call 908-789-3670 or go to our website, ucnj.org/trailside. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you very much, Commissioner. Commissioner Baker.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The Board of Elections is still seeking bilingual poll workers who are fluent in Spanish for the upcoming primary election on June 6th. Poll workers perform a valuable civic service by helping to ensure that every eligible voter can exercise their right to vote on Election Day. And bilingual poll workers are especially helpful in our diverse community. Any Union County resident who is 18 years or older and registered to vote in Union County can qualify to become a poll worker. No experience is needed before Election Day. Each new poll worker attends a training course. A $300 a day stipend comes, well, a $300 stipend, I won't say a day, $300 stipend comes with the position. If you're interested, apply now in order to reserve a spot. For more information and to obtain an application form, visit the Board of Elections website To request an application form by mail, call the Election Board at 908-527-4236 or email And that concludes my comments, Mr. Chairman.
And Commissioner Baker. Commissioner Mirabella.
Yes, thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. We look forward to the next show of the Century Friendly Theater Series at the Union County Performing Arts Center in Raway on Sunday, May 7th, at 2:00 p.m. It's a live performance.
It's a live performance of the ballet Princess Aurora's Wedding from the classic fairy tale Sleeping Beauty by the New Jersey Ballet. Sensory Friendly Theater has been delighting our audiences with autism and other sensory sensitivities at the Performing Arts Center in Rawway since 2012. We started this series to help ensure that all our residents can enjoy an uplifting experience of live theater in a welcoming, judgment-free environment. To order your tickets, please go to www uc pac.org, or you can call the box office at 732-499-8226 if you need accessible seating. In addition, if you're looking for an outdoor activity, our annual Union County Spring Fishing Derby for persons with disabilities and special needs is coming on May 13 from 10:00 in the morning to 1:00 in the afternoon at Echo Lake Park. The fishing derby is free of charge, but you need to register online at ucnj OPSN-reg or call 908-527-4781 for assistance. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. That concludes my comments tonight.
Thank you, Commissioner Mirabella. Commissioner Williams?
Thank you, Chairman. The Board would like to announce the date for our next Union County Women Mean Business Summit on Tuesday, June 13, at Galloping Hill Golf Course located up at 3 Golf Drive in Kennelworth. For those of you who are not familiar, this is an initiative of the Union County Board in collaboration with a number of community partners. The event is designed to give our participants an immersive experience that will feature a series of workshops and discussions for women at all stages in their careers. You can find more information in the, you'll see more information in the coming weeks, including our session topics, panelists, and the keynote speaker for our, on our website Pre-registration for this event is also required, but please, for now, just mark your calendars and save the date. Thanks so much. Thank you, Chairman. That's it.
Thank you, Commissioner Williams. Commissioner Bodek?
I would like to remind everyone that the annual Union County Senior Citizens Art Exhibit is now on, at the conference center of the Union County College, located at the Vocational Technical Campus, 1776 Raritan Road in Scotch Plains. The show features 133 original works in many different media, including digital art and media, mixed media, as well as painting, photography, and sculpture. The Senior Citizens Arts Program provides non-professional artists, as well as professional artists, with an opportunity to share their creative vision and insights with the Union County community. We are very proud of our senior artists, and we encourage everyone to come and view the exhibit. The exhibit is open from 9:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. Monday, Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday. Also, you can visit from 9:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. on Tuesdays. It will be on display until the end of May, so please come by and enjoy. There is plenty of free parking available at the Votek School Campus. Thank you very much, Chairman.
Thank you. Commissioner Leon?
Yes, thank you. Good evening, everyone. Briefly, I want to say that the last Wednesday in April is Administrative Assistance Day, and I want to thank all the staff at Union County, because you are our backbone, and without you, we couldn't do it and help our residents. In addition, I would like to recognize the month of April as National Arab American Heritage Month. This month was a time for us to recognize and appreciate the contributions that Arab Americans have made to our society, culture, and economy. Like many others, they have come to the United States seeking new opportunities, freedom, and a better life for themselves and their families. They have faced many challenges along the way, but they have persevered, and their contributions have helped to shape our nation. I just want to say that President Biden did this last year, and I'm very happy to be the one to announce it here in Union County. In addition, I would like to announce the registration is now open for Union County Means Business, The Future of Work, Networking Breakfast, and Panel Discussion. This event will be on May 10, starting at 8:30 a.m. It will be held at Kane University Donald Conklin Conference Center at 1000 Morris Avenue and Union. The Future of Work Panel Discussion is proudly hosted by the Union County Board of County Commissioners. The panelists for this event will include Union County Mean Business owners, employees, and business resource experts who will share their perspectives on various topics related to the evolving landscape of their work. Thank you, everyone. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Leon? County Council?
No comments. Thank you, Chairman.
County Manager? No comments, Chairman. Thank you. Vice Chairwoman?
Thank you, Chair. We are very excited to announce that we are holding a financial planning workshop for women on Wednesday evening, May 10, from 6:00 p.m. to 8:30 p.m. at the Hill Tavern located at our Galloping Hill Golf Course at 3 Golf Drive in Kennelworth, titled Women, I'm sorry, titled Wine, Women, and Wealth. The event features expert guidance by representatives of the firm Marge Financial and Securian Financial, along with pairings with wine and small plates. The event is designed to encourage women to feel comfortable in the financial environment and to help build their confidence about planning for the future. Participants will also have the opportunity to meet and network with their peers from many different walks of life throughout Union County, helping to build a community of confident, empowered women. If you are interested in attending, you can pre-register now through the Union County Office on Women, online at ucnj.org/women. Please note that space is limited, and you must be 21 or older to attend. And that is all. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Vice Chair. Just want to thank our office for people with special needs and disabilities who held the Autism Walk last week. That had a great turnout of individuals supporting the inclusivity that we have here in Union County. Once again, want to thank everyone for providing their comments in reference to different topics, resolutions, and to community information. And just once again, when it comes to Mr. Salam Ismail, you know, he provided his comments, and that's one thing we do too, is let the public speak upon different matters they want to speak upon, but it also works both ways, where there's a respect level where we stay quiet when some individual speaks, and then when we speak back, that's when, you know, it's opportunity for us to provide information also. So, while Mr. Salam, I'll be speaking to him later, Mr. Salam feels the county isn't doing nothing, or he wants to be on social media and state that, is Facebook Live, trying to politicize the situation. Our county has taken a steadfast role in making sure that we have said from the beginning that we acknowledge, provided before, the information we have seen in research, where we're all stating it did occur, no one's saying it didn't occur. But even quoting what Mr. Salam Ismail said before is what we believe the location is. And that's the issue that we've been working with historians, with other individuals, in trying to accurately pinpoint the location. We know it's in this vicinity, and that's why we have been working with Reverend Dr. Lundey and the First Presbyterian Church in making sure that we're not combining the two, but dedicating air specifically for those three individuals that were burnt at the stake that we know took place. We're also providing interpretive signage that will be dedicated to those three individuals that were burnt at the stake. We know it was a tragic event, and we know that, like I said before, when Union County wasn't even formed yet, it was before that. So, it's been a little harder for us to do our research, it's been a little harder for Reverend Lundey, along with our Culture and Heritage Affairs Office, to get the information, but they've been working hard in reference to working with the state, in reference to contacting assets county, to try to get information from them also. So, when Mr. Salam comes here and says that we're not doing nothing about it, or, you know, we're trying to, you know, draw our attention to matter, this Commissioner Board, and I know I've said it already multiple times, already for past three, four meetings easily, that we've never said it didn't occur. We know it occurred. We are working to make sure that we're providing light to the situation and making sure that we're not forgetting what took place and acknowledging those three individuals through that tragic event. So, I just want to make sure we're clear on that subject and not trying to politicize a situation, but more importantly, bring the light and bring this sad part of our history and recognizing it. So, with that said, tonight, we have a need to go into executive session. County Council, please make your statement relative to tonight's executive session.
Thank you, Chairman. Pursuant to provisions of the Open Public Meetings Act, a public body may enter into executive session for the purpose of discussing certain enumerated subjects. This Board now wishes to enter executive session for the purpose of discussing attorney-client privileged communications and discussion relative to the potential settlement concerning the matter entitled Darren Barno versus County of Union. The minutes of the executive session shall be separated from the minutes of the open public session. The minutes of the executive session, redacted as appropriate and necessary, shall be available in approximately 30 days. The clerk to the board shall retain the original minutes until such time as the confidential limitations have been removed, at which time they shall be made available. Upon the affirmative vote of a majority of the members present, the Board may retire to executive session. Upon the Board's return, it may or may not take formal action on the matters discussed. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you very much. May I have a motion to enter into executive session?
So moved, Chairman.
May I have a second?
Second.
Motion was made by Commissioner Mirabella, seconded by Commissioner Bodek. Clerk of the Board, please call the roll.
Commissioner Baker?
Aye.
Commissioner Bodek?
Aye.
Commissioner Garrettson?
Yes.
Commissioner Leon?
Aye.
Commissioner Mirabella?
Aye.
Commissioner Williams?
Aye.
Vice Chairwoman Palmieri Mueded?
Aye.
And Chairman Granados?
Aye.
Chairman, you have eight votes in affirmative to enter executive session.
Thank you. We're in executive session. Okay. May I have a motion to overturn from executive session?
So moved.
Second.
Commissioner Baker, seconded by Vice Chair Mueded. Clerk of the Board, please call the roll.
Commissioner Baker?
Aye.
Commissioner Bodek?
Aye.
Commissioner Garrettson?
Here.
Commissioner Leon?
Aye.
Commissioner Mirabella?
Yes.
Commissioner Williams?
Aye.
Vice Chairwoman Palmieri Mueded?
Aye.
Chairman Granados?
Aye.
Chairman, that's eight Commissioners.
Thank you. County Council, Bergen, do you have anything to announce in reference to executive session?
Thank you, Chairman. Nothing to announce at this time.
Okay. May I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved, Chairman.
May I have a second?
Second, second, me, please.
Motion was made by Commissioner Mirabella, seconded by, I'm not sure who again, who was that? Commissioner Leon? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Meeting's adjourned.
Nice job, gag. 7:30, nicely, nicely left.
It's 2:00 a.m.
It does, right?
And yet, it's only 7:00. Sorry. We're trying out here leaving the dais. I know. This is not right.